I'm going to call to order the October 6th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Agency, and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight, as we do each week, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by Mr. Paul Bloomberg.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding parcels identified in the closed session, printed closed session agenda, the Rayleigh's property and the Raymelson City properties. No action, or final action was taken, direction only was given. That brings us to our general administration agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is a time for members of the public to address the council on items that aren't on our agenda but are within the council's jurisdiction. Would you, doesn't anybody wishing to speak on this or any other item tonight, to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the front door and turn it into the city clerk? In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, and to that end, we asked that all comments be limited to more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that shows which agenda item we are on at any one moment. If you can't figure it out from the discussion, it's helpful for being too obtuse. And then finally, we just that folks refrain from any boos, or applause, or cat calls, or other demonstrations, and that we maintain a civil discourse, because sometimes folks that come and speak at these meetings from the public can be a little nervous and anxious, and we want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable participating in their local democracy. So with that, we have one request to speak, and that's by Mr. Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, again, of West Sacramento, for the record. And during lunch hour, I was with my dining buddy, and he shows me this rain gear he got from a place called Bare Bones Workwear, and he was out at 5800 Madison Avenue, and when he showed me the receipt, I recognized it as, as the same style as the one that said last week, "We'll open soon," or "opening soon," out next to Radio Shack. Well, I called, I called the number on that receipt, and they indeed verified that they did open up Monday, and they do have the, the larger sizes, or working guys, up to 5XL, and I, and they do have casual, casual wear as well, and so it's almost, almost like a Joe Sun type thing, it sounds like to me. I haven't been there yet, but I'm just putting two, two together, and, and based on what the gentleman told me over the phone, and what my dining buddy told me, why, and like I say, the same signage and so forth, why it's, it makes, it makes sense, and it's, it's only a stone's throw from the bus stop over there. But I'm, there is one little thing I'm confused about. Last week, on Channel 13 or 31 News, they announced that the Transit Center was open over here, and I guess they put the sign up, but it was still covered with that black plastic, so I think they've still got a few days' work to done, and I'm guessing that it will be done all by this weekend, but again, that's just, that's just a guess on my part. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. It's been quite a month, right? So Transit Center's open, we're going to adopt the smoking, potentially the smoking ordinance later, and we finally have shopping for you to have, keep your local sales tax dollars here. The Transit Center, we completed the celebration of its completion last week. There are, we're still waiting on the, some of the last pieces of equipment to come in, principally the real-time displays that will be outside, under the shelter, so you'll be able to see precisely when the next bus is coming for each of the lines. And so when the, when those completed elements are in, it will be official, it will be officially open, and buses, all the buses will stop there and, and turn around there, so, but the, those last elements will be arriving shortly. And I think the last pieces were not, Randy would know better, but we're not expecting till later, closer to later in the month, as opposed to in the next couple of days. So, all right, that's the only request we have under item 1A, so item 1B is Council of Communications, are there any reports, are there communications this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Executive Commission on the Homeless Tenure Plan met on September 23rd. We agreed to a revised plan of action for the next year, basically looking at the available staff resources in the cities and counties. It looks like we've got some tasks that are going to be doable. And the next meeting, we are also going to be meeting with Ann Moore and Paul Lake of Sacramento County. Ann Moore is Kevin Johnson's homeless coordinator, and we're going to be talking about what's going on regionally in terms of homelessness, and what potential cooperation, cooperation or cooperative arrangements we can develop to address the homeless issue. There's a lot of development going on both sides of the river, and I think both jurisdictions recognize that homelessness is not a particular areas problem, but it's a regional problem. So hopefully, we'll come back with a report on, on what that cooperation might look like.
All right, I run reported, was in Washington DC for the summer meeting of the US Conference of Mayors, and met, had three meetings that I think would be, might be of interest to the council. First was the Secretary of Transportation, Rayla Hood, who'd come to our meeting to talk about the President's proposal for the next transportation reauthorization, including a $50 billion immediate outlay of funding nationwide for transportation. And I'll mention it mainly because I mentioned, I brought up, I used the opportunity to mention the streetcar project to the secretary, hoping that I could count on his radar screen, and he's, he, the secretary's response was, "Mr. Mayor, I know your streetcar project, and it's a good one, and keep submitting, because your, your application was, was strong," which I thought was, it was encouraging, that the cabinet secretary in charge of the project was at least aware of what we were doing, and how it fit in with some of our other development projects. So while I was on a roll, I, we met with the Assistant Administrator for the Small Business Administration, and I pitched the Capital Bowl project, so I don't, that one, I'm not a, she was not aware of that project, amazingly, but it was worth a shot. And then finally, we, yeah, she's now, finally met with the Treasurer of the United States, who in addition to being the person who signs all of our money, is now also the lead administration person on the Build America Bonds program. And so I had an opportunity to talk with her about the Riverfront Hotel project that we've been working on, and what the long-term prospects are, and they've done a review of the, of the Build America Bond program, and the administration has proposed, and is actively supporting an extension of that program. Both the House and the Senate have, in different vehicles, in different ways, also expressed their support for extending the program at different rates, and, and some of them with, all of them with reduced subsidies, below the 35% that's in the current program, some of them for the long-term at 32%, which is, I think, the administration's proposal. The Senate is something like 32% in year, year one, which would be 2011, then dropping down to 28% in year two, and the House proposal was, I think, at 20, 28% or 25%. So there's a lot of these swirling around, and she was, she was in part looking for support out in the country for, for the program, and she's very interested in coming out here once our project gets farther into the, into the process, because they're looking for some signature projects that are public-private partnerships, that are a bigger scale than some of the Build America Bond projects that they've had in other communities, that are, you know, three or four million dollars, but they'd like to be able to show how that program can leverage significant public and private investment in a way that grows the economy in a bigger way and prosperity. So I, you know, if that, as we get closer along, and I committed to her that, you know, in the next four, or five, or six weeks, sometime after October 30th, that we would be back in touch about the potential of having her and/or the Secretary of the Treasury come to the, to the area to, to highlight the project, and that certainly couldn't hurt in terms of attracting additional investments. All right, if there's no other reports, we have no appointments to boards and commissions. It's my intention not to make any additional, I mean, unless there's any emergencies, any additional appointments prior to November, and I know the city clerk has already begun the process for the next term of commission and board appointments. In our strategic plan process, the council had committed to assess the, the commissions and their meeting schedules, and potential consolidations, and other sorts of issues, and so I'm going to ask the city clerk if, if we could get the commission's advice, and get one of our, get a session together, maybe me and the mayor pro temp can meet with the chairs and vice chairs of the commissions, and to get, just get some initial feedback from them, and then we'd report back to the council and see if there's interest in, in continuing that conversation, but it was part of our strategic plan, so, and it's an action that we need to deal with, not the, not, not purely the staff. So if the clerk could help us with that, get that together with the, with the chairs and the vice chairs, that would be great. All right, item two is presentation of a proclamation recognizing the Yolo County Library on its 100th anniversary, and the first anniversary of the new Arthur F. Turner Community Library. Is there a motion on the proclamation?
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Viegas, and seconded by Mr. Kristof. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries, and I know Gail Clower is here, on behalf of Supervisor McGowan in the county. Are you alone, or are you going to be joined by?
All of us.
Great, okay. This is, it's the, it's a tradition that we do it on the side of the podium, that extends to the old City Hall facilities. We don't, we don't really need it here, because there are cameras everywhere, but we do it anyway, as a nod to history.
County one on the other side.
That's right. But we, we all know what you look like as well, so this is a great, better for the public. So I, it's my honor to be able to read into the record the proclamation the council just adopted, celebrating the 100th anniversary of the Yolo County Library, and the first anniversary of the new Arthur F. Turner Community Library. Whereas, the Yolo County Library was created as, as, as one of the eight original county libraries in California, with the establishment of state legislation in 1910. And whereas, Yolo County Library, originally known as Yolo County Free Library, had its beginnings in partnership with the Woodland Public Library. And whereas, as the agency responsible to public, for public access to information and literacy, Yolo County Library initiated the first school library system in California, supplying books, maps, records, globes, and other materials to schools throughout the county, eventually becoming the model for other counties. And whereas, Yolo County Library has provided countless hours of public service, valued children's and family programming, serving more than 690,000 customers annually, circulating more than 1.5 million items, and hosting 1,176 programs for more than 23,098 children, teens, and adults. And whereas, as a cornerstone of social democracy, Yolo County Library continues to provide a variety of innovative, innovative free services and family-friendly facilities, with resources that support early literacy and school readiness, quality programs and services to promote youth development, literacy, and lifelong learning. And whereas, the Yolo County Library has remained committed to public service that builds communities through the establishment and support of school libraries, bookmobile services, outreach to underserved people, and expanding communities, in partnerships with public and private organizations, and collaborations with sister libraries and systems. And whereas, Yolo County Library and its staff serve thousands of people each day through seven branch libraries in Clarksville, Davis, Espardo, Knights Landing, Winters, Yolo, and of course, West Sacramento, and through system-wide services at Central Library Services, Yolo Links, Yolo Reads, and the Yolo County Archives and Records Center, providing critical access that no other agency provides. And whereas, the new and improved Arthur F. Turner Community Library opened one year ago today. Yeah, it will be today when we present this, on Sunday. Opened one year ago, this coming Sunday, in West Sacramento, at more than double the original size, and follow, and with the following features: an after-school homework center, a toy lending library, study tutoring rooms, and triple the number of computers, and a self-checkout system. And whereas, these libraries are recognized as beloved institutions and community centers, partners and friends, and information centers that build knowledge and bind our communities. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of West Sacramento congratulates the Yolo County Library on its 100th anniversary, and the first anniversary of the new Arthur F. Community Library, right here in West Sacramento. And we're, also, this is particularly special to the council. The council's been very committed to the library. Mr. Johansson and Mr. Beers have both been present of the Friends of the Library. Mr. Viegas was on, on all of our library planning work in order to make this facility happen. Mr. Kristof's been a longstanding supporter, so have I, that we very much believe in the library and its centrality to the success of our city, and to the quality of life, and to the cohesiveness and connectedness of the community, and so we're very, very proud of it, and certainly the community is, and the response to the new library has just been extraordinary. So we're joined by Gail Clower, who's going to lead the presentation, and introduce our two other special guests as well. And Gail is the deputy supervisor for Mike McGowan.
Yes, I am, and I'm, I'm here only representing Mike McGowan, who is unable to be here. He's with CSAC Conference this, this evening, and unable to be here. And I'm introducing Elizabeth Gray, who is our Assistant County Librarian, number two now, and Cindy Tuttle, who is the president of the West SAC Friends of the Library. Something to say?
Whose photo is right in the bottom left?
Okay, on behalf of the Yolo County, Yolo County Libraries, and the West Sacramento Friends of the Library, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for their support of their public library. I would also like to invite everyone to attend the event this Sunday, October 10th, from noon to 3:00, at the Arthur F. Turner Community Library. The centennial of our county library. This level, the commitment, and the level of public service that our library provides would not have been possible without the significant support of the West Sacramento Friends of the Library. So I would like to turn this over to Cindy Tuttle, the president of the West Sacramento Friends of the Library, to talk about what they're doing to support our wonderful institution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cabaldin, members of the council. You have been very, very supportive of our library over the years. I really want to thank you for not only recognizing the historical contributions that the Yolo County Library has made to our community, but also our new Arthur F. Turner branch. And what the West Sacramento Friends of the Library are doing is party, P-A-R-T-Y, party! So we want to invite everyone to the big party the Friends of the West Sacramento Library are having on October 15th. It is a dance party, and that's strictly what it is. No speeches, no rubber chicken, it's just come on out at the VFW Hall from 7:00 to 9:00. The legendary Mike McGowan, and the mighty Delta Road Masters are going to be playing for a dance. Come on down, we'll have some light refreshments, and just join us to celebrate 100 years and our first anniversary there, so that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, and I, just, so it's clear to folks in, watching at home, this is a party for the, by the Friends of the Library. I know a party, a dance party of just librarians may not sound that exciting, but the, but the Friends of the Library are a lot of fun, so. Yeah, yeah, dancing with a bunch of people going, "Shh, shh." All right, thank you very much, and we'll see you there. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items 3 through 11. Are there any items on consent that the council wishes to remove or for separate comment or question?
Four and eight.
Eight and nine.
All right, item four is consideration of awarded bids for rail equipment, an amendment to the relocation agreement for the Semex Rail Project between the Redevelopment Agency of the City of West Sacramento and Semex Construction Materials Pacific LLC. Mr. Kristof.
My only, no, you can sit down, because I had talked to Mike Lucan just a little bit ago, before the meeting, and he explained what I had missed in this, in the whole agenda item, and that was, that the city will be reimbursed. What's happening is the city is, has an agreement with Harmer Steel Products, and there's some things that need to be purchased for the extension of rail lines. Well, we're purchasing the materials, but at the same time, it's, this is a bond proceeds that is going to come back to the city, and so there're not going to really be any city dollars into the, this particular agenda item. So I appreciate that, Mike, and thank you.
All right, I'm going to pull item seven, because I forgot to do this under appointments, which is consideration of contract renewal for animal services within the county of Yolo, to veer off on a tangent. The county supervisor Thompson has asked us, you don't need to come forward, I'm, this is what is affectionately known from the 90s as an Oscar Viegas, so the word animals in this item, so I'm going to bring it up. Supervisor Thompson is convening a countywide task force to look at animal control services, and they've, I think we're actually hosting one of the, the first meeting that will involve elected officials, and they're looking for a representative from each of the councils in the county to participate if, if someone is willing. So if there is a member of the council that's interested in participating, although Supervisor Thompson is going to be leading the effort, and she will be leaving office at the end of the calendar year, this is expected to be an ongoing, an ongoing effort. And since we're, and they're very interested in participation, it's the, the only city with the significant population of whales and mountain lions, but, so it's, it's a high priority for them, so, all right, Mr. Mr., okay. Okay, then we'll, the Mr., I'll give you the details, we have the date and the location. Is, is, okay. All right, so if there's no, no objection, then it'll be Mr. Johansson, and Mr. Kristof has the details. All right, item eight is consideration of approval of a four-year water transfer agreement with Dunagan Water District, and adoption of Resolution 10-73 certifying the project's negative declaration. Mr. Kristof.
Hi, Greg. Will these funds go into the water fund? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johansson.
You're not done, Greg.
So what, what is the need for Dunagan for this water?
Well, from what I understand, Dunagan, it depends year to year, but during, specifically or especially during drought years, their allocation gets cut or reduced, and so they turn, pretty much every year, they turn to other agencies to purchase water. So this year, we're one of the agencies they've turned to.
For a four-year period?
We've done one single-year transfer this year, and this agreement is for, a commitment for four years.
Yeah, yeah, my concern, I, I'm not real up on water rights, but my concern would be creating a precedent of water going out of the city for some future water decision, that if we can let go this for four years, maybe we can let go of it forever?
Well, one of the things that is important for us to do is demonstrate what is typically referred to as beneficial use of the water. Currently, currently, we're not using all of it, so there is no beneficial use, and that plays into future contract negotiations for this water. To the extent that we can demonstrate beneficial use by transferring it to other agencies, that does establish the beneficial use, and hopefully will actually help us to secure continued, the continued amounts for future contracts, for we know, so.
Okay, all right, thanks.
There's a, there's really a sort of a couple other things, go on, Greg, that's fine. There's a couple other things that go into this, too, and the county is certainly very concerned about water transfers and all of this other kinds of things, but Dunagan's within Yolo County, so they sort of say, hey, this is just a neighbor helping a neighbor within the same county. I think the county would have some real issues if we were sending it to Contra Costa County, or down to LA, or whatever else, or selling water for that. Now, not that I really mind doing that, I would still go ahead and do it, but I mean, that's a whole different issue. And then the other part of that, I think, is the water quality at Dunagan. There's some real issues there with their well water, and so this, this really helps that little small community. So I think that those are a couple of the other issues that are all incorporated into the Dunagan stuff, and I just wanted to make sure that those go into the water funds, because that's going to assist us with rates and all the other kinds of things, potentially.
Mayor Pro Tem Viegas? You're good? Okay. Item nine is consideration of Resolution 10-70 affirming the city's support for exploration and implementation of shared service opportunities in Yolo County. Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, Toby, I, I know we've been talking about this for a while, and this is basically looking at, from a countywide perspective, the possible integration of different types of services in order to avoid, to reduce duplication and to increase efficiency. But the question is, once we approve this tonight, this is basically, these are basically policy guidelines for staff to start developing something for this, so my question is just, what is the next step?
Well, we've identified a number of areas to examine. One of the ones that came as one of the top groups was consolidated and shared training exercises, and we're actually going to have one of those later this month, where all of the cities will be participating in a training exercise in Woodland. So that, really what we wanted to do is get, make sure that we had policy support for this. This comes out of some meetings we had earlier, and so the next steps are, there are four different things that will be worked on simultaneously, and, and actually, they already have started, but this provides the policy support for it. All right.
Mayor Pro Tem Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. City Manager, so how, I mean, I think, I think that the, the concept makes sense, I just think that as the conversations with these shared services evolves, that there ought to be a way to surprise the council of kind of where the conversations are going, because I think folks get nervous when they hear changes in the way services are being rendered, and you've got a whole lot, host of different services that are, that are being explored, and so I, I just would make sure that, you know, and some, some of the things have gotten back to me already, and I, and so, and I think the concept is good, I just want to make sure that there's some mechanism to surprise the council as we begin to move forward, because some are, some are going to move forward quicker than others.
Some are moving forward right now, but any, any that require significant commitment of resources or financial obligations would come to back to the various legislative bodies for approval. But for example, the training that we'll be doing, this is, is something that could be administratively pursued, and that, so they wouldn't, we could report on it, but it, it wouldn't require any action of the council.
Right, exactly. All right, thank you.
All right, then, with that, we have the consent agenda before us. So motions? It's been moved by Mr. Johansson, and, taken by Mr. Kristof?
Even though we didn't get to one, that's okay.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing none. That motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted. Item 12 is public hearing in consideration of Resolution 10-71 vacating a portion of public right-of-way between, being the West Capitol Avenue off-ramp from westbound Tower Bridge Gateway, between the Tower Bridge and Bridge Gateway between the Tower Bridge and Third Street. Mr. Collier.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item seeks your approval of Resolution 10-71, which vacates a portion of public right-of-way, which currently acts as the West Capitol Avenue off-ramp from westbound Tower Bridge Gateway. On September 15th, 2010, council approved Resolution 10-68, which announced the city's intent to vacate the subject right-of-way. All public postings and notifications of the proposed abandonment, which are required by state law, have been performed. On September 30th, 2010, council approved the award of the Tower Bridge Gateway East Phase Construction Project, which will demolish the off-ramp and relocate existing utilities within the subject right-of-way. Because this work has not yet been performed, staff requests the council to direct the city clerk to defer the recording of Resolution 10-71 until that work is complete. Recording of the resolution with the county is the action which finalizes the abandonment.
Other questions for Mr. Collier? Seeing none, then we're going to open the public hearing. We have no requests to speak on item 12, but since it is a public hearing, does anyone, does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Turn to the council for any further question, comment, or motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kristoff.
I would move to adopt Resolution Number 10-71 vacating public right-of-way, being the West Capitol Avenue off-ramp from the Tower Bridge Gateway between the Tower Bridge and the Third Street, and direct staffs are direct the city clerk to hold the resolution to defer recordation until the off-ramp demolition and utility relocations have been completed.
Seconded, moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed, hearing done. That motion carries. Item 13 is continued public hearing in consideration of second reading and adoption of Ordinance 10-13, amending the city building code to add green building standards and sustainable strategies. Mr. Goodwin.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, staff is continuing the public hearing for consideration of second reading and adoption of Ordinance 10-13, amending the city building code to add green building standards and sustainable strategies.
I just said that. No, go ahead, Randy, sorry. Sorry for being redundant.
Staff respectfully recommends that city council conduct the public hearing and conduct a second reading of Ordinance 10-13, amending the City of West Sacramento Municipal Code by adopting CalGreen mandatory provisions, chapters one through eight, with the adoption of current voluntary measures from CalGreen, including enhanced energy performance standards, lower domestic and irrigation water consumption standards, and amending the definition of new construction for all sections of the CalGreen Code. On September the 22nd, 2010, the California Energy Commission passed a resolution verifying and approving the City of West Sacramento to actively enforce those locally adopted and 2008 California Building Energy Efficiency Standards. With this California Energy Commission approval and council approval of Ordinance 10-13, the City of West Sacramento will commit to actively enforce energy and water savings exceeding the 2008 California Building Energy Efficiency Standards. Staff is happy to answer questions and would like to turn it back to council.
Questions for Mr. Goodwin?
After the public hearing?
And are we, are we the third city in the state to do this?
I believe so. I initially thought we were the first, Marin, and then one city in Southern California.
Simi Valley was, yeah, the other one, yeah, okay.
So we're the third. Yes.
All right.
First in Northern California.
That's right.
First in Northern California in the region.
Well, that's true.
All right, then we're going to open the public hearing on item 13. We have no requests, but does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, Randy, we had our first reading some time ago. Have there been any changes in the staff report from, between the first reading and the second reading?
No, there are no changes.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Johansson.
Yes, Mr. Goodwin, I know you're looking at more input on the incentives, and I think the list of incentives that you have in the staff report is good, but what I'd like to do is maybe have this a little more proactive, so we can continue to investigate incentives that other cities and counties and jurisdictions have used successfully, and I know we've mentioned a couple times what they're doing up in Seattle, particularly in connection with the local utilities and incentives are able to, right, because what we're trying to do is, the two issues are increase the water efficiency and the energy efficiency over the standard, green standard. So what I'd like to do is that conversation to continue and continued outreach and defining additional incentives through the local utility partners that we have in the region. So this is not, and this is a good list for starts, but I'd like to make sure that we continue to look at those incentives as they arise.
Further discussion? Then is their motion? Mr. Johansson. All right, Mr. Johansson has moved the recommended action. It's been seconded by Mayor Protem Viegas, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed, hearing done, that motion carries. Item 14 is presentation and discussion of Ordinance 10-14, amending chapter 8.16 of the Municipal Code to add provisions for the prohibition of smoking at public transportation stops.
Mr. Mayor, member, member of council, the purpose of this report is to present Ordinance 10-14, amending chapter 8.16 of the Municipal Code. As a response to community concerns and council recommendation, Ordinance 10-14 was drafted to include provisions for the prevent, prison, sorry, the prevention of smoking within 20 feet of the public transportation stops. And according to local surveys of other municipalities, the, in consultation with the attorney's office, it was determined that 20 feet was the standard no-smoking zone, and so we therefore adopted that as our standard for this ordinance.
Are there, this is a presentation discussion only, so are there comments or questions?
I think the only thing to, to maybe help prevent some conflicts that we think probably will arise, especially at a bus stop, is signage. I think if we do something as far as signage on the kiosks or whatever else that may be, that could help prevent some of the issues that, you know, no smoking within 20 feet or whatever, you know, whatever, but it, it could help.
I think it's a good direction, and I'm prepared to move forward to the next step.
Yep, I agree. Thank you.
All right, we do have one request for public comment on this, and that's by Mr. Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell again for the record, and as you probably remember, I strongly support this, but in, how shall I say? In parallel with one of my anti-smoking songs, because sometimes people can be smoking up wind from you, and the smoke, especially cigar smoke, can get downwind from you, and it can get in your shelter and so forth. And I remember the chorus of the second song in '92 went, "The answer, my friend, is blowing in the wind. If you smoke, please smoke downwind from me." So maybe, maybe we could modify or make sure that the smokers are smoking downwind from the non-smokers, so that this wouldn't have the unintended effect. I mean, just imagine if a bunch of smokers were standing outside the north entrance or any other entrance that was open, and they were smoking away and the wind was blowing the smoke inside the building. You wouldn't, you wouldn't find that very healthy or acceptable. And so, anyway, I just thought we'd take that into consideration, but I'm, I'm for moving onward and upward, as they say, and, but I, I think that, that should be taken into consideration, because we do, we do wait for buses during breezy weather, and we get these people smoking in the wrong direction from us, and so, anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. All right, that's our only public comment, and that was, this is a workshop only, so if there's nothing further, then thank you, we'll see this at some point in the future for first reading. That brings us to council calendar. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out that on the, this Saturday, the 9th, Station 45 is going to be having their annual open house, which starts at 10:00 AM, and then again, the library will be celebrating their first year anniversary on Sunday. We've been mentioning to the council that we would like to cancel the October 13th meeting, because we didn't anticipate any council actions needed done that night, and it looks like that's actually going to be the case, so we're proposing that that meeting be canceled. And then I wanted to alert the council that on the 28th of this month, we'll be having our sneak peek opening of the new community center across the street. That'll be at 11:30.
Mayor Protem Viegas? And do we yet have schedule, is the Harbor interchange completion ceremony scheduled for the 27th yet, sir?
That, I, I don't think that's going to happen as scheduled. We're having the thermoplasty problem with, with Harbor as well, and there are some other things that have gotten, the schedule has gotten behind, so we're, we're getting a preliminary, a new schedule from Caltrans tomorrow, but that's looking a little doubtful.
Okay. And then this Saturday, the Urban Land Institute of Sacramento's Young Program organizes a monthly second Saturday bike tour. It's called the Cool, Cool Projects Bike Tour that occurs once a month, and they've once before been to West Sacramento to tour projects in Washington Square and the Rivers and Broderick, and they're coming this Saturday to West Sacramento again to tour West Capitol Avenue and the Bridge District. And so if there are any members of the council or the community that want to participate in that, it's a, it's not a, you don't need a road bike, you don't need to wear spandex. It's a comfortable bike tour of some of the major projects. It starts at nine in the morning here at City Hall, and then we'll extend later. But if you want to come, make sure to email, email us so that we know how many, how many donuts to provide, so that'll be Saturday morning. Are there any other questions on the calendar? Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, Carol, you said the 13th is going to, the council meeting is going to be canceled.
That's correct.
And then I see canceled under the 20th.
Well, when we had adopted the, the council schedule at the beginning of the year, we normally meet on the first and, and third Wednesdays of the month. And so if we, if we scheduled a meeting on a different time, it was a special council meeting, so that regularly scheduled meeting was canceled on the 20th and replaced with the meeting on the 13th. Now we're canceling the 13th.
And the 20th.
Yeah, that, yeah, the 13th, that's correct.
Okay, so, so we're going to have, this is our last council meeting prior to the election.
Before the election, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, city manager report?
Nothing this evening.
City attorney reports?
Nothing to report.
Staff direction from members of the council? And we, Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a direction necessarily, just wanted to let the council know, the conversations we've had in the past couple of years, well, the last couple of elections, I think there's been a, a level of frustration, I think, because of the, the delay in the returns for West Sacramento that are being posted or available to the public. It's been a growing frustration, I think, certainly with the council, but I think in the community as well. So those who may not know, we requested some assistance from the county clerk recorder, Freddie Oakley, and I think our clerk has had some communication with her. We actually got a presentation by her most recently to help address some of the car concerns and the lack, and I think we were concerned about equity in the county and that our returns were not being presented or available as quickly as other cities. Long story short, I'm going to spend the entire evening, well, just good part of it, with the city's city clerk, Chris Rankin, with the, in the, in the elections office, and essentially kind of follow the, the steps that are taken from the time that folks vote here in West Sacramento until the posting of those ballots on the website. And so I've been assured that there's, there is going to be some changes in terms of how those ballots are posted, and so I'm anxious to see what that looks like, and encourage that she's heard us loud and clear, and she's interested in trying to figure out a way to make it more equitable.
All right, then we have no future agenda requests? So is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye and opposed, hearing done. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.